Good evening and welcome to the Pullman City Council Meeting for this Tuesday, January 14th. Mike is here tonight as our clerk, and so would you please take role?
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember McCall.
Here.
Councilmember Parks.
Here.
Councilmember Records.
Here.
Councilmember Sorensen.
Here.
Councilmember Weller. Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Nathan Weller notified us that he could not be here tonight. Do I hear a motion to excuse?
Move second.
Move in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then, under announcements tonight, the Martin Luther King Jr. Program, Washington State University's annual celebration. The King Life and Legacy goes on. Programming from January 16th through 23rd brings together community members, celebrates ways that we carry on Dr. King's spirit through our work. For more information, you can go to wq.edu. Pullman Winter Market back at Brolsford WSU Visitor Center every third Saturday through April. Next one, January 18th, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Looking for excuse to have some fun while doing some good for a worthy cause? You can get your tickets for the Whitman County Humane Society's annual furball and yappy hour to be held Saturday, February 22nd. The SCL Event Center. More information, go to whitmanpets.org. And Pat Wright has an announcement around the Pullman Regional Hospital Gala.
So, the 14th Annual Pullman Regional Hospital Foundation Gala is scheduled for February 1st. It's a little bit early this year just because of the way the calendar flipped. It's always the first Saturday in February, the day before the Super Bowl. And so, this is our premier fundraising event, and we will be raising dollars hopefully for, in support of the next era of excellence, which will be supporting the family residency program, the electronic medical record and equipment. And so, it'll be a lovely evening of fine dining, wine and beer tasting, some entertainment, and raffles and auction items. So, January 20th is the last day to RSVP, and you can do so by calling the foundation office, which is in Corporate Point offices off Bishop Boulevard. So, hope to see some of you there, and thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And the last Tuesday in the month, we just thought we'd let you know that we're not going to have a council meeting because a number of us, including Brandon, Eileen, Ann Parks, Dan Records, myself, Adam, will all be attending the city action days for the Association of Washington Cities over in Olympia, meeting with our legislators and working on some of the issues that are before us coming up for the state. With that, we now go to a presentation tonight, and we have plenty of material around here that we can start before we introduce Sue Geyat, who's in charge of the Pullman Good Food Co-op event. I know you have a lot of great people on board, and Sue, thank you for being here tonight and giving us a presentation on the food co-op.
Thank you. Well, good news. We are going to have a food co-op in Pullman real soon. Thank you, Mayor Johnson, council and staff, for allowing us the opportunity to share with you where we're at today. So, let's start at the bottom line. The Pullman Good Food Co-op will create 20 to 30 new jobs for our local residents and bring in several million dollars each year in sales revenue that's currently going outside of our marketplace. What's unique about food co-ops is their net profits actually get reinvested back into the community. Helping our local farmers, supporting our food banks, issuing patronage dividends are just a few examples of how the co-op plans to support our community when we open. Well, that's a good question. When are we going to open? There's eight stages to opening a food co-op, and associated with each stage is the number of members that we need in order to open our doors. Currently, we're at stage six in our planning. That's the capital campaign. We'd also like to couple that with securing a location, so we want to do six and seven together. However, our membership is lagging behind. We're at stage four, and so, we need to bring up from 200 members up to 500 members actually before we can start our capital campaign. Over the last month and a half, we've been working with community, and especially the Pullman Chamber of Commerce. Marie, Brittany and Kimberly have really helped in getting the word out that we need additional members in order to open this store. So, we've doubled our membership in the last month and a half. So, what we want to try and do is, in this first quarter, actually achieve that goal, 500 members by the end of March. We also have businesses, about 12 or 13 local businesses that are distributing our brochures. They're also offering 10% discounts or, you know, dollar-off beers. I know Paradise Creek Brewery just sponsored us this last month, and who is it? Poppy Salon this month, 10% off their retail products for members. These are founding members only. A few others are the Yisup Chrysler Dealership is also distributing, Chipman Taylor, Noshes has done it. So, each month, we hope to have a new business that will sponsor our membership campaign. So, tonight, we're here to ask you to help join us in our membership, maybe by getting the word out, or actually connecting us with individuals or businesses that you know that might be interested in making this membership campaign a success. So, that's it for the update. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to field them.
Questions to Sue.
I have a membership.
Thank you.
I have my membership.
Yes, thank you. Several of you are members. Thank you very much.
Well, it's rather important for this area. We know there's been a study. We know that one time, Moscow Food Co-op looked at coming over here. But I think it's better if we have our own.
Yeah, yeah.
You've got all the things going together.
Yeah.
I don't know if some of you remember, but Sue, at one time, was with the State Auditor's Office, and she used to audit our books.
Oh, Glenn!
In another life. But we appreciated working with you at that time, and Sue, it's just nice to have you in charge of this project, and we know it's going to be accomplished.
Yeah, sure will.
Any other comments? Questions?
Move to go.
All right.
Thank you.
With that, we now go to the consent agenda. These items are considered routine in nature. Do I have a motion to read consent agenda by title only?
Move second.
Move in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to that? Laura McAlloin, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Your consent agenda consists of a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 17, 2019, and approve them as submitted. A motion to approve dispersments represented by accounts payable checks numbered 98312 through 98421 totaling $315,547.79. A motion to approve dispersments represented by accounts payable checks numbered 98422 through 98480 totaling $961,464.98. A motion to approve dispersments represented by accounts payable checks numbered 98489 through 98554 totaling $118,575.76. A motion to approve dispersments represented by accounts payable electronic funds transfers numbered 12252019 totaling $56,422.76. A motion to approve various dispersments totaling $815,660.9. A motion to transfer $298,234 of retail sales tax revenue to the restricted CIP Reserve Fund for the 2019 fourth quarter. A motion to ratify change order number one to the City Hall and Parks and Recreation Center relocation 19-09 contract. A motion to approve a lodging tax grant to Pullman Chamber of Commerce in an amount up to $2,500 for an artificial Holiday Fest tree to be featured in downtown Pullman's Pine Street Plaza beginning winter 2020 and beyond. And resolution number R-1-20, a resolution authorizing the execution of a wellness service agreement between Pro forma Physical Therapy LLC and the City of Pullman, Washington, for the purpose of developing a wellness program for Pullman Fire Department. And resolution number R-2-20, a resolution authorizing acceptance of amendment number one to interagency agreement K5511 between City of Pullman and Washington State Department of Enterprise Services to provide energy and utility conservation project management and monitoring services.
Is there any item the council would like out for discussion?
Nine.
Number nine. Any others? Then, the consent agenda consists of items one through eight and 10 through 11. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Move second.
Second.
Move in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, Al, number nine.
I just got a quick question in regards to the scoring for the grant. Maybe you could explain to me, I noticed that the scoring on this one, they got 52 out of 100. How do we, where do we say, "No, you don't have enough points," or "Yes, you do have enough points," or how does that all work?
It's a 10 or 12-point criteria scale, and the questions are based on estimated number of people that would come in to the event. How many people would come in outside of 50-mile radius? How many people would possibly be staying overnight? You know, beds and heads kind of thing. I can't, I don't remember all of the different aspects of it. Some items are just not applicable, and so, that's where you might have, out of 100, maybe only 70 or 80, or seven or eight of them would be applicable to the particular event. So, for example, we had one today, and now I can't remember the exact verbiage on it, but how would you use this grant to leverage getting other monetary assistance? And so, if that's something that isn't like an in-kind, you know, contribution, that kind of thing. So, if it's not applicable, then it would be part of the criteria list. If, from past history, if you don't think you're going to have anybody coming in from a radius of 50 miles or further, then that wouldn't score. That wouldn't score any points. We pretty much know that with the Holiday Fest, it's going to be a draw of people from the immediate area. So, where you'd have maybe 10 or 15 points allocated to that question, you might not give them any points because you're not going to draw people from outside of the area. So, I, that's...
Okay, so, I understand that, but we've scored them 52 out of 100. When do we not allow the grant, or deny the grant, or give the grant? And it doesn't have anything to do with this particular grant? I'm just asking. At some point, you flunk if you're grading, and if they're not applicable, then they should say "not applicable" on there, but that doesn't say that. There are zeros or lower numbers.
It's, that's the hardest part of this granting process, is that it is very, it can become very subjective. And the Holiday Fest is one of those events that doesn't fall into the specific criteria of all of these things because it's predominantly a local event. And so, in the past, a lot of the dollars have gone to the lighting, for one thing. The lights were acquired as a result of grant dollars. The tree, the real trees have been paid for through grant dollars, and the reason we're coming forward with this is because we haven't been able to acquire a good live tree, which is becoming more and more of a problem. And so, you know, do you want to sacrifice the look and appeal of that for an artificial tree? And so, the decision was made to do that. This wasn't a good example of how the actual criteria is set up, but, you know, the scoring is subjective. I mean, it's subjective based on an objective list of criteria.
So, if this was for a different group or event, and they scored 52 out of 100, would you award the grant?
We would probably not award it to the full request.
Okay, so, my point here is, is this really a grant that should be approved for the lodging tax dollars, or should the funding be from somewhere else? And I'm not cutting down the tree. Excuse me.
You're going to be sorry.
I really didn't mean to say that.
Yeah. You are Tree City USA. Just wanted to make sure that you know that.
But I'm just saying, I'm looking, I look at the scoring every time, and, you know, if you've got an 80, or a 90, or 100, whether, you know, I'm assuming we're good, but if you're only getting half the points, at what point do we deny the grant? I just don't, I don't understand this.
Very seldom do we deny a grant.
Then, why do we do the grading?
We do the grading to determine how much of that grant is going to be approved.
We may need to think about how this works. So, anyway, I'm very confused.
Yeah, I do, and would a percentage score provide more clarity?
Well, it's 52%.
Well, but it's not 52%. Let's say there's 10 questions, and they're each worth 10 points. So, there's a possibility, but if only five of those questions are applicable to the grant, then if they got 10 points for each of those five questions, they would be 100%. So, would a percent score provide the council with more clarity?
Then, that needs to be changed on here, instead of zero out of 10, NA.
NA for the thing.
But I'm just, I need some clarification on this, because this is really hard for me to say yes to this because of the score.
We had a lodging grant, a lodging tax advisory committee meeting today, and we did exactly that. We had, we, the scoring came up to be 78% of the total, and so, we looked at that 78% and applied it back against the amount that was being requested and kind of extrapolated that, and that's how we made our decision on what's going to come forward to you guys next month with this particular grant. But every, every application is not, like you say, there are, we should be showing NA rather than zeros. And zeros is not because it's not worthy, it's because it's not...
And expressing it as a percentage to provide the council with clarity.
Yeah.
Because the sport I'm involved in has weird categories, and so, the scores are always end up as a percent score of the potential points.
Totally.
Even though everybody does the competition a little differently.
So, I think we could recommend it.
Yeah.
Because we need, well, we'd have to be a policy change then, and make it consistent for every grant application, that it will be expressed to council as a percentage.
So, I'll throw this over to Laura to find out, from her perspective, if that's a possibility to be able to do that that way.
So, the lodging tax, the expenditure of funds is actually dictated by statute as to the purposes for which it can be spent. And you have to have a lodging tax advisory committee, and they have to make a recommendation to you. The scoring is an effort that is, was put in place in order to ensure that every application was evaluated on the same merits, so that there was a record of how the committee considered it in order to make their recommendation to the council. But ultimately, it is a subjective decision, and the only limits on the expenditure of funds is, is it a use that the legislature allows you to spend these funds on? How each city decides to spend those funds is subjective and up to it, as long as it complies with the RCW as to the type of use. So, this is an operational expense of a festival. That's an eligible expense. So, really, the only limitation on how you can spend the funds is the process requiring that it go through the lodging tax advisory committee, and does it fit within the parameters of what the legislature says these funds can be spent on? So, it's just simply an effort, the grading is an effort to ensure that every application is analyzed in the same way. And then, it still comes down to the city council saying yea or nay.
But they just said that they use the percentage, and then they can change the, they don't agree to the full amount. They give them 80% or 50% or whatever.
That is the recommendation they make.
Request.
That's the recommendation they make to the city council. The city council is not bound by that recommendation. City council that wants to do something other than what the lodging tax advisory committee recommends can simply send notice back to the lodging tax advisory committee that that's what you intend to do, or you're considering, and give them 45 days to comment on it before you take any final action. So, that's where the, that's where the city council has the ability to also exercise its own subjective discretion.
Brandon?
So, the one thing I remember that stands out is when Palooz Summer Series came to us, they scored 100, and initially, the amount awarded was only about half of what they had requested. Lodging tax went back, the committee, and I know they awarded more, because we were looking at that and said, "Hey, they, you know, this brings in a ton of people," and they scored very high, "So, you know, why are they not receiving more than just a certain percentage of that?" I thought we did right by that series, and then by the city, by reevaluating that. So, I think it's a good point. I don't know if we can change the form, if that makes it different in evaluating, or...
The form is actually adopted by the lodging tax advisory committee, and again, it's just an informational form to give the council, because you're not the ones doing the original consideration, to give you some objective criteria that it was measured by. Yet, the form can be changed by the lodging tax advisory committee.
But looking at this, looking at this form for this particular request, all of the items that did not get full points were in areas that were, and that should not be zero, should be NA for this particular event. And as Laura says, this is more an operational expense than a marketing or, you know, something that's going to be used to attract people from outside the area. If you, if you want to equate it, the full price of this tree was about $5,600, so we're getting it now for $2,500, so it is in line with the point assessment here.
Should the council make a recommendation to the lodging tax to change the form, modify it, put NA, and do the, is that what you would like to have?
Separate from this, but yeah, I think that would be, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But we're just giving a recommendation, we're not making a motion on this thing. Would that be a recommendation?
And I can work with Laura to do that. All of this paper...
I was just going to ask, was, so what was the requested amount?
$2,500.
Okay. So, the, were lodging taxes recommending they receive the full requested amount?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mayor, I just want to point out, you can make that suggestion to the lodging tax advisory committee, but it is their decision.
Right, correct.
And all of, all of the paperwork that we use in making these determinations, we revised, what, maybe about four or five years ago, and everything was reviewed by Laura for utilization by us, so...
It's very similar to what other jurisdictions use, but the criteria that, not all of these, not all of these criteria go to whether it meets, whether it's a permissible use of the funds. They're really more of a local, objective question about, is this how we locally want to spend these funds?
Objective, yes. Subjective, not so much. I would like to be more objective.
Yeah, I'm going to reiterate, so my point, that I would like to see both the raw score and a percentage score, and with the use of NA rather than zero, because I think that provides clarity for the council.
With that, do I hear a motion to approve this?
Move to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
One nay. With that, we now move to the regular agenda tonight. And before that, we have the Aspen Heights Rezone Resolution and Ordinance, but before we do that, we need to do the appearance of fairness questions. And so, Al, we'll start with you, and then we'll go around the entire council here. Does any member of this council have knowledge of having conducted business with either the proponents or opponents of this proceeding?
No.
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 Excuse me.
Now, has any member of this council communicated with any proponent or opponent regarding the proposal that is subject to this proceeding?
No.
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 Does any member of this council have either financial or personal interest in the outcome of this proceeding? Al.
No.
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 Does any member of this council know whether or not their employer has a financial interest in this matter, or has an interest in the outcome of this proceeding? Brandon?
Not that I know of.
No.
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 Does any member of this council live or own property within 300 feet of the area which is subject to this proceeding? Al?
No.
No.
No. No.
Does any member of this council have any special knowledge about the substance or merits of the proceeding which would or could cause this council member to prejudge the outcome of this proceeding?
No.
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 Is there any member of this council who believes that he or she cannot sit and hear the matter fairly and impartially, both as to the respective positions of the proponents and opponents of this proceeding? Al?
No.
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 Last question, is there any member of the audience who, because of the appearance of fairness doctrine, wishes to disqualify any member of this council from hearing this matter? And if so, please state the name of the council member and the reason or reasons why you believe that member should be disqualified because of the appearance of fairness doctrine. Seeing none, we will now proceed, and Pete, matter's yours.
Thank you, Mayor. This proposal was submitted by York Acquisitions LLC on behalf of the property owners, which are the Port of Whitman County and S&amp;D Mater LLC. The property involved is 25.6 acres in size. It's located about 1,000 feet southwest of the intersection of North Grand Avenue and Albion Drive. The applicant's request is to change the zoning of this parcel from I-1 light industrial to R3 medium-density multifamily residential, and amend the comprehensive plan map accordingly. As noted in our memo, planning staff is recommending denial of this application, primarily because we believe that well-sighted industrial land is a valuable resource, and it should be retained for future economic growth opportunities. On the other hand, the planning commission is recommending approval of the application based on the testimony provided at its public hearing on November 20. At that hearing, there were nine individuals who spoke. All of them were proponents, and they basically had three points. One, there is a high demand for multifamily housing in Pullman, and there's a limited supply of land available for such housing in town. Two, the subject property is well-suited for high-density residential development. And three, there is plenty of industrial land available in the city, given the current absorption rate for development of industrial land. After taking this testimony and continuing the public hearing to December 18, the commission voted unanimously to recommend approval, as I mentioned, of the proposal. And then, as you recall, counsel by state law, you are not allowed to receive any new evidence at this meeting tonight, so the action requested is to act on the resolution and ordinance before you. The resolution addresses the comprehensive plan map amendment, and the ordinance relates to the zone change. And in accordance with the planning commission recommendation, both of those documents are set up for your approval. So, Al, we have to answer questions.
Now comes the questions. Pete. No questions?
Yeah, I do. And I don't know if this is a question that you can answer because it's new testimony or whatever, but I guess my biggest question is, why was there such a big disconnect between planning staff and the planning commission in terms of the interpretation of the comprehensive plan? Because the staff said that this was not consistent, this project not being consistent with the comp plan, yet the planning commission said that indeed it was. So, that was kind of my first question about what's going on here.
Yeah, it appeared obvious that the planning commission was persuaded by the testimony that was provided to them. Some of that testimony was even specifically about the relationship of this proposal to the comprehensive plan, and how it really did, it was supported by the comprehensive plan. And so, you know, in matters like this, the planning commission was offered two different points of view, and as indicated in their conclusions, which are brought before you, they indicated that they were more persuaded by the argument... they indicated that they were more persuaded by the arguments of the proponents than they were of planning staff.
Kevin, I got a question. In the report from the proponents, it said that the port invested a significant amount of money for infrastructure, for water and sewer. But I recall the city also put up some money for that water and sewer to take down to the port for the industrial. So what kind of money did we put in from the city?
I'm gonna speak just in general numbers because I can't recall the exact numbers, but it seems like the project to extend utilities, primarily water and sewer, there was some stormwater associated with it, was pretty extensive, and it was somewhere between around a million and a half, maybe, maybe a little more than that altogether. There was a section right at the beginning of the extension, past the auto body center, where it was kind of no man's land because it was the SR 276 right-of-way. And so the city paid to get it across the right-of-way as part of the port project. We contributed to the ports project. So it was in the neighborhood of 307,000, and so it's a fraction, you know, less than half of the project.
So the port paid the majority of the infrastructure?
Correct. Yep.
Other questions? I have one about, you know, looking at the annexation, it was 515 acres, and they're talking here 26 acres for residential. Does that mean that the 489 are left for industrial in that area or what?
No. The majority of the land that was annexed under that proposal was residential in nature in its zone R1 and R2. And that's to the west of the property that we're talking about here. So the industrial, my recollection is that there still might be something like 16 to 20 acres that would be left in industrial to the west of the subject property if it were to be rezoned. And then there is some commercial property located along Albion Drive, between Albion Drive and the property that we're talking about tonight, too. There would still be some business opportunities there.
Other questions or comments?
I have another question, and it's probably a stupid question, but can this not be considered candidate for mixed-use zoning so that we kind of have the high-density residential along with the light industrial that maybe could marry the opposing views here?
Could be, although we don't have currently a mixed-use zone category, but it is something that we're considering in the comprehensive plan update.
So would this, could this fall into that kind of a category if we were to go in that direction?
It could potentially. It could. Because if we do go in that direction, then mixed use is, as it implies, it would be a place where business, residences, and, you know, some level of manufacturing might all be allowed in the same space.
Did we not do somewhat of a mixed, or at least a variance along Terreby at one time for Schweitzer Engineering when they were talking about putting residents or apartments or a hotel and some other things in that same area along the industrial?
Yes, yes. One of the plans that SEL brought forward to the city was one that had a true mixed-use component along the lines of what I was just talking about with commerce mixed with residences. And so we did explore a potential new mixed-use zoning district. But in the end, SEL changed their plans, and the city, of course, had a number of other priorities, and so we went, we put it on the back burner for a while.
I think this would make this proposal beholden to that, but I think it would be wise to explore that because I would hate to see another, I've heard the term food desert that we have right now in some of our apartment areas. Again, that would be separate from this, but I think it would be worth exploring that in the future.
Would still be commercial zoning out here to allow for grocery stores and things like that in this change?
The...
What?
The commercial zoning district.
Commercial there.
Right.
Yeah, the commercial zoning district, which is located along Albion Drive, would allow for that, yes.
It's buried in here.
Yeah.
Right there.
Any other questions, comments?
Apparently I'm fixated on words these days. There are some, in the applicant's response to the city of Pullman, there are some sweeping generalities in that second paragraph that make me a little uncomfortable and make me less inclined to look upon their application favorably.
Where are we?
What page?
Attachment G, page 1. And the second and third paragraph, by addressing the need to decongest downtown, I don't know exactly where that comes from. Pullman's greatest asset is WSU. I think WSU is a tremendous asset. I don't know that it's our greatest and only asset. And the city is well aware of their goals, of the city, I don't recall that city goals included locating student housing where it will not have direct impact to existing neighborhoods. I find that pejorative, and I don't care for that, which leaves me very much on the fence here.
Any other comments? If not, do I hear, first of all, a motion on this resolution? Move to adopt? Do I hear a second?
All second.
Okay. Do you want to read the resolution?
Resolution number R-3-20, a resolution amending the official comprehensive plan map of the city of Pullman from industrial to high-density residential for the real estate herein described, consisting of 25.6 acres located approximately 1,000 feet southwest of the intersection of North Grand Avenue and Albion Drive.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Two, three. All those opposed?
No.
Two, three. What decision? This is one of the ones since which you passed the ball to the mayor, since I get to break the tie. Or you can postpone the vote until Nathan comes back the next time, whatever you would like.
I think you was gone last time you were the breaking vote.
I still remember, in the 16 years I've had to break. I also was torn, I had a number of questions on this as well, but the overriding part for me is that it is adjacent to the other R3 zoning, and it makes sense in that regard. I am very concerned about industrial space, and that's the reason why I was asking that question. But in this particular case, I'm voting for it. So that is the vote. Okay. With that, we now move, we have the ordinance to do. So the ordinance, would you, do I hear a motion on this ordinance? 20-1.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Ordinance number 20-1, an ordinance amending the zone classification from I-1 to R3 for the real estate herein described, consisting of 25.6 acres located approximately 1,000 feet southwest of the intersection of North Grand Avenue and Albion Drive.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
No.
We had two noes this time, and we had...
Well, I approve the ordinance because we approved, this is dependent upon...
So I don't have to break this time, okay?
Why, I thought.
You've got that one. I want to make sure Mike has the vote in there. They all want, we're okay. All right. With that, thank you all for your hard work. And Pete, you made some very good arguments on this.
Thank you.
And I also understand where the Planning Commission went as far as the R3. That, to me, was the overriding on this, so.
I agree with that. That's kind of, it's next to an R3, and there's Marshall District on the other side, having industrial.
And there's more residential in that particular area, his way is growing, so. With that, we now move to item number two tonight, and this is the motion to authorize the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding between the city of Pullman and the Downtown Association. So we'll start with Adam first, and then we will hear from Tom Handy from Downtown Association.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. The Downtown Pullman Association has been working for some time to bring together a memorandum of understanding to try and memorialize the relationship of some of the partners that are participating in supporting the Downtown Pullman Association. It's, the document that's before you has been worked on by several different people and a few different legal councils that have been involved, so there may be some comments on how it's put together, but Tom can talk to you about the details of the document, so.
Tom Handy from Paradise Creek, and also the, is it president or chair? President of the Downtown Association.
The mayor of Downtown Pullman Association.
Unelected position, okay, but you're president of that, isn't you? Off the top.
Well, thank you. Now, the memorandum of understanding has gone through several read-throughs by different entities. City's attorney has looked at it and provided comment, and we've made changes regarding those comments. WSU council has been through it, and they are happy with it. And also, the Pullman Chamber Board has voted in favor of having the executive director, Marie Dimkosky, to sign it, too. So the final entity that we need approval from is city council so that the city can officially be involved with the Downtown Pullman Association.
And this document does not commit a monetary amount at this point?
No, this is just a working agreement, saying that we're gonna go together, go forward together in getting this done.
And you said the university attorneys went through it?
Yes. Yep, Kirk's ready to sign. We've got a tentative date for a signing set, so this is the last stop.
Okay. Is this a necessary part toward that Main Street affiliation? I mean, is this something that has to happen?
Well, we have to have funding, and so while this doesn't directly authorize a specific amount of funding, it does say that the city will help and work together with us towards funding the operation. So we're putting it together, this together with three other partners, plus the Downtown Pullman business owners and property owners. And so those partners are the city of Pullman, WSU, and the Pullman Chamber of Commerce. So while this memorandum isn't necessarily a requirement, it is part of the requirements to putting the full package together to become a downtown association.
Other questions?
Not necessarily a question, but I'm just gonna go ahead and dive right into my word
obsession here. The first paragraph under parties talks about Pullman. I think that's sort of our platform. And it mentions WSU and how WSU basically is Pullman, and I disagree with that. If we're gonna talk about Downtown Pullman, let's talk about Downtown Pullman. I mean, this has been the economic and transportation hub of this region for 100 years, and I think there should be some acknowledgement there. This is very bloodless and kind of blindered. It's just not well done. It's just not well-written. Students, faculty, and staff are referred to in a phrase four times in this little bitty document. What about the people of Pullman? Residents don't get a mention until you get way down to the third paragraph, fourth paragraph, in chapter three. I agree with this document in principle. Materially, I agree with where it's going, but if this is to be a cornerstone, a foundational legacy document for what we hope will be a very successful program, I'd like to see it written a little better. And I realize that, you know, all the legal things have to come into play, and sometimes the language can be a little dry and appear a bit disjointed, but this is absolutely bloodless, and I think it could have a little more passion. I mean, we want to look back on this document 20 years from now and say, wow, this was the start of something big. And I just think that it needs to have a little more, needs to have a little more pizzazz to it. It's just, it's really, you know, and my favorite word, vibrant, is used three times. I mean, get out the sithar, let's do something different. You know, we want this to be a legacy document and look really good. Let's take another shot at it. I realize that we have to jump through all the legal hoops, but I want this to look really good. I want to be able to take this and hand this to a potential donor and say, here's what we're doing, and make them believe.
Well, my only response to that is due to the fact that there's no one single word that encompasses all of the entities. There has to be some sort of order that they are written down, and it was arbitrary.
I'm not talking about the order of it. I'm talking about the lame content.
Okay.
Laura, you had a chance to look at it, and I know that a number of attorneys did, and they tried to make it purposely vague in some respects.
I get that. I get that. Let me, it is not a, it's not a binding agreement.
I understand that.
It's not one that'll be whatted in 20 years.
It's really something that without, it's not something that lawyers draft or rely on, it's a planning document. It's a document that says, well, we'll get together and we'll talk, and we all have these shared interests. So in terms of it being a foundational document, I guess I would disagree with that characterization. It's very similar to ones I've seen in other planning efforts that multiple parties are participating in. It's really a feel-good document, and that's about it.
I will go along with that characterization of what it should be. It should be a feel-good document. This doesn't feel good to me at all. It just feels, if this was English 101, I would run this person out the door.
Well, I think you can also look at this as probably a document made by a committee, which you know that's...
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so you understand.
Oh, yes, but I think good language is important. If you're gonna make it a law, make it a good one. It's not a law, I realize, that's a phrase.
It is not a law.
That's a phrase I borrowed from somewhere, so, yeah.
It is not binding, and ultimately what this process will lead to is actually a binding agreement.
Which will be very meticulously put together.
And I will be looking at it very closely.
And it'll be about 800 pages long.
So be it.
Please, it'll be Sunday reading.
Yeah. It'll be vibrant.
Any other questions or comments? If not, do I hear a motion on this?
Move to approve the memorandum of understanding?
Second.
Move in second. The motion to authorize Mayor Glenn Johnson to sign a memorandum of understanding between the city of Pullman and Washington State University, the Pullman Chamber of Commerce, and the Downtown Pullman Association. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Well, obviously, I don't have to break that tie. All right.
Thank you.
With that, thank you very much, Tom. Any new business to come before the council tonight? Seeing none, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Yes, second.
Move in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?